Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is the Grand Forks City Council's Committee in the Hall for Monday, June 12th, 2023. Item one called Order 1.1, welcome to roll call.
I'm here.
So I'll be here.
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 Here. Here. Here. Great, thank you. Under 2.1, we've got three presentations under updates and information items. 2.1, MPO Street, how we plan updates. Ms. Kuba, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Terry Kuba, I'm with the Grand Forks, Grand Forks, I'm PO. We are here with Jason Carvey with HDR, he is our consultant on this particular plan. And so we're just going to kind of go over what we're, where we're at basically with the plan currently. Next one. So as I said, we're looking at progress to date as well as we've gotten our first results back from our travel demand model. And kind of a quick glance at some of the forecasting conditions. That's Just to kind of introduce everybody into what we're really doing. We are, what we have, what we're mandated to do is update a regional transportation plan every five years. Which goes out into the planning horizon of 20 years. So our NPO has always broken this down into three parts. And then summarized it into our metropolitan transportation plan. So we're, we also have to make sure that it's physically constrained. So there's definitely all sorts of different parts that need to be done. Next slide. Well, Jason.
So today, basically what we've done is there's been a lot of work done in the area. With just a range of different studies of corridors, land use plan, the bicycle pedestrian plan, the transit plan. Basically, we've taken all that together, other data, and kind of evaluated where the system sits today. Kind of the existing conditions review in here in the slider to kind of get the highlights of what's in there. But also in developing the plan, we need to make sure that we're incorporating the federal guidance. Again, this is all basically about how to, how to spend the federal money that's coming into the metropolitan area. And then we're going to summarize the feedback we got at the public open house we had in November last year. But this all kind of forms that, that goals and objectives sort of framework that's kind of guiding the plan. Thank you. So we did have an open house at the Grand Forks Library, November 2022. We had a, got a kind of a focus group, stakeholder group that we spoke with, had a public open house. Gave folks an opportunity to kind of weigh in on, you know, what was most important for the transportation system to provide in Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. And essentially the priorities that we heard, safety, making it efficient, reliable with connections. System, and then also bicycle pedestrian connections are important. Next slide. So I'm not going to read through all of these, but essentially we go through those goals and objectives. We identified five goals and objectives. But with each of them, we, we've got more measurable objectives. And essentially these reflect the input we've gotten from the community. Also need to make sure we meet the federal performance requirement. So by goal areas are efficient, reliable, safe, connected and accessible. Next slide please. Preserved and maintains, make sure we take care of the system that we have today and make it sustainable and recently. And again, each of those objectives are measurable metrics that we can say, okay. If we consider these strategies or these projects, how well are they doing and actually meeting our overall regional goals? Next slide. So with that baseline conditions, essentially gone through, look for crash issues in the metro area. Five years of crash day that we went through, traffic operations, looking for, we've got congestion. The condition of pavements on the streets and bridges. Looking at just kind of how the roadway network connects to each other. And then understanding the environmental baseline, just getting the data together where we've got what, things like that. And then working on future traffic conditions, we're going to give you a draft kind of picture of what that looks like. With the, with areas of future congestion where we anticipate traffic along with, with Grand Forks, these. So I'm going to give a quick overview of the travel demand model. It's kind of the basis for the traffic forecast. It's essentially a decision-making tool. It, it basically simulates how land use, what's of jobs and where people live, where they work. How that interacts with the transportation system. Basically, it's kind of a standard framework, but we take a lot of local data and kind of calibrate it. We get to kind of does a good job of representing what's going on out there. And then it lets us kind of go from that baseline of, okay, we're doing a pretty good job of reflecting what's happening in Grand Forks and East Grand Forks today. We can look at what if scenarios with it. So what we're doing here is looking at 2050, if we continue to grow as we think we're going to grow. How does that change how much traffic's out there, where we might need to make investments, start thinking long-term about those investments? But we can also look at, you know, once we, and I'm going to show you here in a minute, kind of the do nothing, like it's 2015. We haven't really made any investments beyond kind of our current budget capital plan. You know, what's congestion look like? We can also then look at, okay, what, what, you know, street wide means, what do they do, new interchanges, new bridges, things like that. So Basically, MPO staff create land use inputs for the future years and then Advanced Traffic Analysis Center or ATAC at North Dakota State is the one that kind of builds the model and maintains it.
President, are we waiting to the end for questions or should we make a conversation?
Right, yeah.
You mentioned models.
Yeah.
And for the, the traffic projections. And you, you mentioned local data. Do we also use other cities, comparable cities? Do we, do we look at Fargo? How much of those other external models affected this?
Yeah, so there are, so there's national data that they use. There's this thing that comes out, I think every seven years called the National House Transportation Survey. And that can be kind of the starting point for, for instance, how many trips a typical household might take. There's, there's data, I know we've got data on travel patterns, I think across the state. And so we've got kind of localized data, understanding where, where trips start and where they end. I think ATAC uses that to kind of calibrate the model as well. And so there might be a special survey from another metro area in the region. They might use because it's probably a little bit closer to reality than what the national data might tell us. But What, you basically go through this process of checking every step and then going, okay. But look at the traffic volumes, what's happening in Grand Forks, you know, how do I need to adjust that data to make it more representative of what's going on here? So I think generally, I was not personally involved in that calibration, but I, I worked with the ATAC and I know that's their process.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Is there a similar process with estimated population and population growth?
So that's about what we're going to get into during the segment.
Yes, for the population and all of that, basically the NPO takes the data that is, that was Agreed upon in the land use plans. So we, we look at that, that total. Basically, that in the land use plan, we estimated it up to around 2050. Because generally that's when how far out we ask the land use plan. If it wasn't in the land use plan per se. The NPO would have done, other metropolitan areas do their own population study as well. Without looking at the land use specifically, like providing a land use plan. But they will look at what the cities have for land use plans. Because they want to look at the zoning, they want to look, work with the staff to make sure that What we're hearing, what they're hearing is being translated to what, where we're getting population. So we've estimated out in our land use plan, the 2020, well, we have the 2020 population. And then we go up to 2035 and then 2050. We have a midpoint in our plan, that's kind of It's nice to have that midpoint, so we have the current, they are basically the current and then the middle and then the end of our, like our transportation plan. For that growth. And then we go, okay, we have to spread that growth throughout the, each area. So whether it's East Grand Forks or Grand Forks, we look at those populations specifically and individually. So we're going to look at where those, those populations land, where we're, where we're expecting the growth to happen. We talked to staff about that as well, we get their input online and move forward from there. And we do that with both household information and job information.
With you, I mean, you probably don't recall, the, the 2000 The 2000 plan, so we're in the 2020 plan, the 2000 plan, what percentage growth of East Grand Forks was in that plan?
In East Grand Forks?
In East Grand Forks and, and what actual growth did they have between then and today? Any ideas?
I'm not sure, I'm not exactly sure or positive of it. I'm thinking it was around, they estimated their population growth at 0.9%. But I do know The last, before the 2020 plan, the 2010 plan, they did estimate for a 2015 plan.
Years. Their estimate is going to be close?
Um, they've been closer to 0.6% growth in general for East Grand Forks. And that's what they've been sticking to pretty much. When they, when they estimate their growth. So in Grand Forks, you know, there's a lot of guessing involved because, you know, 2020 was a very anomalous year and that's when we did our, our census as well. So we've always had the issue of counting populations. University populations in general. So and once again, that university population left kind of early before the Census Act was actually started. So that you're asked to state where you live on April 1st, 2020. So and then, and go forward from then, fill out all the information for the census. So once again, we had that, excuse me, that anomalous year. So I'm assuming with a annual growth of 2% for the city of Grand Forks, that they were trying to compensate For that undercount, that undercounting to that population, undercounting for the year itself. And since pretty much 2000 was the year that a lot of Population decreased because of the flood and the population that had left. You can see that.
Sure. That makes perfect sense. I, I guess I'm, I'm actually also curious because ATAC is going to be doing the Projections of traffic growth. Do they look into the geopolitical climate of today? For example, when they're, when they're doing that, for example, the state of Minnesota is raising Property taxes significantly. They're raising income taxes significantly. The city of East Grand Forks is raising sales tax. All of the fees in, across the state of Minnesota are increasing significantly. And so I'm wondering if they take any of that into consideration when they're estimating the population growth for the city of East Grand Forks? Man, I'm not, I'm not a guy that studies population, but I think I can think a guess as to what might happen in East Grand Forks over the next few years.
Well, the reality is, is that in the 2020 census, while Oak County lost population, the city of East Grand Forks did not. Did not, they actually gained population.
Sure, this is an aging community like Grand Forks County where they moved into the, that makes sense.
So, you know, we're looking at a long-term thing and to be One of the reasons why we need to, you know, look at this every five years, why the federal government wants us to look at it every five years is because all that changes often.
Right, it makes sense. Okay, sorry.
Can go to the next slide and And as you can see, this is the employment and you, some of that growth area you can see is very much on the edge. Of Grand, of Grand Forks as well as on, in East Grand Forks.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll kind of explain, is we transfer, you kind of get the idea that, you know, we've got today, we've got a snapshot of today. We've got a model that kind of does a good job of reflecting what traffic looks like today. So then we pivot off that growth that Terry was talking about. So we see the growth, you know, on the fringes, we see traffic volumes go up. So this is a snapshot of daily traffic, the darker and the thicker the lines, the more traffic. And so it's a little bit relative, representative of today, but you can see we've got some pretty significant growth down in Southern Grand Forks. And actually, if you go to the next slide. This is what we call like a delta, how much it grew. You can see those red lines and traffic volumes of about 10,000 ADT or average daily traffic. So that's cars a day, cars, trucks a day. So you can see, we've got the new 47th Avenue South interchange in there. 47th Avenue South, it sees a lot of growth, Columbia and Washington South, the 47th see a lot of growth. And even through the, some of the mature corridors gateway, we see some growth. So if we go to the next slide. We start to see areas of congestion and if you, the, the oranges and the reds are kind of where we're starting to get to some pretty, you know, significant 2050 peak hour Congestion that we're anticipating. Again, this is if we don't make any investments beyond what we've got in the next five years of what we'd call a capital program. And so you can see we're anticipating, you know, 47th Avenue South, Columbia and Washington today, where there are two and three lanes south of 47th. Pretty significant congestion because we've got growth, you know, anticipated all the way down to Maryfield Road, 1850. We're also seeing Demers, you know, basically between Washington through downtown. Fourth Avenue South over to the Point Bridge, we've got Demers out west in kind of the industrial area and gateway as well. So, you know, not to get into a whole lot of detail, this is, this is pretty draft and we're going to start working on this. And start identifying, you know, where, where we think there's potential investments for us to start looking at that could move into the plan. Again, we're looking out through the year 2050. And so we're trying to just start always plan ahead and, you know, we obviously know kind of what the short term looks like and what our short-term priorities are. What we want to start thinking about, you know, maybe beyond that too. And so if we go to the next slide. So we do have a public open house a week from Wednesday, so June 21st. I'll get some information on the next slide with that. But the remaining schedules basically have an open house, we're going to talk with, you know, get impressions on different potential strategies. Ask folks kind of, you know, which of these goal areas are most important to them? Get some feedback, we'll have maps where people can kind of say, I think it's a good idea to maybe consider doing this at this location in the communities. But then, you know, so that's what we're calling on for alternatives analysis, start looking at options and projects. Financial plan, Terry mentioned this needs to be physically constrained just for federal requirements. And so we'll, we'll have a, a part of this will be the part that we think federal money can pay for. But part of this is going to be like, what are, what are community priorities that we think are important, we should kind of keep in the plan, even if we don't know can pay for necessarily. Develop recommendations, we'll have an open house in the fall and then a draft plan by October and wrap up by the end of the year. So if we go to the next slide.
There's any questions, but also our open house is on June 21st and it's from 4 to 6 at the MP.
Mr. V. This is 2050 and you show 47th Avenue interchange, assuming that that's going to be, right? Because without it, we knew 32nd was going to have high congestion. Now this shows 32nd has some, but maybe not as high, is that right? But not as much, but already you're showing 47th to be completely congested and you haven't even built it yet.
And that's, that's assuming again that it's, it's a, it's a two-way road, so.
It's a two-way, so does that not mean we should build more than a two-way road then, if it's going to be congested by then?
Well, by 2050, correct. Again, this is when we start thinking about, okay, maybe we can afford four lanes in the near term and maybe we are going to have the demand for four lanes in the near term. But you probably ought to at least reserve the property right away, the public right away, so we can widen with four lanes in the future. But no, you, you bring up a valid point.
Because that congestion could happen in 2040 instead of 2050. I mean, as you look at, so looking at the timing shouldn't probably dictate what the design of 47th should look like.
And Terry did bring up the MPO's, I'll be in 2035, kind of that midpoint to model. And so that'll kind of help us put things into, okay, what do we need to do by 2035? You can start to see issues creeping up by 2035, so maybe that's a 2040 project, but you can kind of get the idea there. It's a good point.
Also, what, anything we do in 2030 could extend out even further than 2050. From having those issues come on.
Mr. Come up, let me start. Just a question, so we're, we're assuming a 47th Avenue interchange and looking at past reports, I don't know that we did that before. Is that, was one of you talked to?
It's kind of been a illustrative. We've known we've kind of needed it, especially in some of the plans that we have done in the more recent Between the 2019 timeframe to today. So we've known it, we've, we've done a I-29 traffic study specifically looking at Look, where, where, where would be the best place to kind of look at putting something? This is what North Dakota DOT is using today to start their process, their Environmental process right now. That's, that's one of the reasons I, the NPO felt it was important to put it actually in our model. Because they are going through that EBIT process, so that means that they are, they are willing to fund that. And that's pretty, a pretty good Point that they, they intend to do that project.
And so you have safety here as your second goal. And so as part of that incorporating DOT information from, I would assume, North Dakota, Minnesota into the model. And then as far as, you know, if you didn't assume a 47th, is there, is there a scenario where you think of what happens to 32nd?
There's, we can definitely do that for 20, our 2050 model, we do plan on doing scenarios. And looking to see how some of those strategies can happen. Which of the strategies will work the best in mitigating some of the issues that we're seeing on the full network? But, you know, In the long run, I don't, the North Dakota DOT is seeing, seeing the same things we are and they, they're starting that process and I I only see them delaying it, if they delay it, then 32nd will definitely go as what our plan, our previous corridor study showed.
Thank you. Other questions, Ms. Longstein?
Will you put a scenario of another inner city bridge?
Yes, that is actually one of our strategies. There are, as we see, you saw along Belmont Road, there was a lot of increase in traffic all along Belmont Road. As well as some of the interim roads on that stretch. So it is a strategy to mitigate some of that traffic going through.
And then the open house, if someone can't make it, is there a way they could See it online and give back that link?
Definitely, we have, we have our website as well as they can contact myself at the NPO.
Further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good information, really appreciate it. 2.2, English Cooley update. Harvey, see you later.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. Tonight, myself and then Amber Levers with A2S as the Water Resources Practice Leader will present the, and share information that A2S has worked on. We've done a summer, executive summary for tonight, basically wanting to talk about the work that has been done in phase one and phase two. We'll bring back the report when it is finalized, but right now we're just giving you an update. We wanted to let you know that, next slide, John, that we're working on a couple two main issues. One is really what causes the main, or the poor water quality of the English Cooley. And then what we do to utilize it as a flood protection feature within our community and turn it into an asset? Or how can we work to have it as an asset and not a detriment? For our residents. And so anyway, next slide, John. We've been working on a number of different projects along with this one. And I just wanted to share that we focused on the area between 17th and 24th Avenue along the English Cooley to do some restoration. We're cutting down noxious weeds, repairing that vegetation in that area and continuing to update residents. But once again, we wanted to talk with advanced engineering beyond basic aesthetics Of the area, what could we do for the overall Cooley itself? And so they really dove into the poor water quality and then how to improve that water quality. And just be able to increase or improve the area for people to want to spend more time there. The next slide, John. One of the areas that we've really looked at is just working with people to have them understand what the Cooley is. It's not fed by a river, it's not fed by a stream. So it's actually getting stormwater that is from our community and from the area south of town. And actually, that's what is in the English Cooley. So it gets dry and stagnant and stinky per se in the fall when it's really low flows. And that's really basically because it doesn't have anything coming into it besides when we get a rainfall event. Currently, we do have legal drain nine closed because we've done some repairs there and the vegetation is being reestablished. So we've kept that closed just so that we don't have that water coming in to So that we can allow it to continue to have that vegetation established. One of the other things that the park district has worked on is that they've done some work at Saratoga Park. We've done more of a biological treatment in that area and they're working to actually Separate that piece from the actual Cooley itself. It was actually dug in and around to connect to it, but they've realized that they actually want to separate it and clean up that pond and make it more of a reflective pond, which it originally was intended to do. The staff has been out and kind of surveyed areas when we get complaints. So we have done some trash collection along areas like 11th Avenue North, which gets like hospital traffic in and around that area. And we continue to monitor that. We do send out postcards, I meant to bring those up, but I'll leave them tonight with you sending out to about 800 area residents Along the English Cooley area, just letting them know what we've done. Reports like this will be saving files to our website as well, so that they can look deeper into the details of what we've been doing. Next slide, John. If I didn't mention already, UND has been working with Audubon and they're working on increasing the vegetation, improving the vegetation in their area that they own. There's many different owners along the English Cooley, everybody owns different sections. UND owns a large segment, Park District owns some areas that I've talked about. And then the city owns some pieces, but we're definitely not the only owner. So as people work towards making improvements, we also need residents to understand how that they can help with that as well. I'll turn over the next slide to Amber.
Thanks. And for those of you who might remember, a few years ago, we started the English Cooley renewal plan with city staff. And through that work, we were really focused on starting to learn a little bit more of why the Cooley smelled so bad, what was driving the aesthetic issues. And from that work, we had a number of conclusions and The three main ones that I'll highlight here tonight on that work that we did back in 2021 was The sediment that's at the bottom of the Cooley has really high levels of phosphorus. And phosphorus being a key component of what drives algae growth, aquatic growth in a, in a water system. Some is good, a lot is not good. And the sediment really has high levels of phosphorus. As we expected, the water quality is poor, dissolved oxygen depleased to just about zero as the year goes on, high ecolite concentrations. And it's really driven by a combination of factors. There's some agricultural runoff that's coming in, illegal drain nine, and when the diversion structure is open. There's a runoff as Melanie alluded to as well. But we're really, one of the big things, again, because the Cooley sediment has a lot of phosphorus, is that Sediment and nutrient cycling that happens in the Cooley itself, regardless of what comes in or from, from outside sources. The third main conclusion that we had in the next slide piece Was that, again, the Cooley functions as part of the city's flood protection system. And about 20 years ago, and you know, a little over 20 years ago, when the Corps was building and designing the flood protection system. Built some models to figure out how does the Cooley respond to rainfall events? And so we kind of tested that with data collected as part of that work in 2021. And that orange line is, is what the quarter and female models would say would have happened. Based on the rainfall that happened in late August of that year. The blue line is what we observed with the equipment that we had out. So those models do not do a good job of representing how that water levels fluctuate in response to rainfall events. And so we had to take a little bit of a And so we had to take a little bit of a left turn. Because in order to evaluate how we might alter water quality and prove that, we also want to make sure that we're not impacting the flood protection function of this of the system as well. So we wanted to build a better model from how does the Cooley respond to rainfall? So that when we're looking at water quality improvements, we're we're doing that appropriately and not impacting flood risk. Next slide. So our two main goals coming into the work that we started last year was to develop more accurate hydrologic. Again, hydrologic is just a fancy word for how much water is going through the Cooley and hydraulic, how does that water move through the Cooley as it works its way to the Red River? And the other one was to really do a little bit more work on the sediment. How deep does that sediment, you know, how much sediment do we have in the Cooley? And develop an initial plan for how to remove that sediment in the most efficient manner. Next slide please. So three kind of main threads of conclusions through the work that we've done in over the last sixteen, eighteen months. One thread on water quality, specifically another thread on the sediment removal plan. And then the third thread on the on the hydrologic and hydraulic modeling. Pause for some questions after each kind of thread of conclusions. So this chart here, time is on the bottom, how much phosphorus in the water column itself is on the vertical. And that yellow and red line that you see at the bottom, that's the threshold for what would be a well functioning natural system. Where you don't have a lot of the smelling aesthetic issues that you have on the Cooley. And all those blue colored dots or what might look like black dots there are the observations that we had, the samples that we took throughout both two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty two. As you can see, almost all of them are above that line. So again, just reinforcing that there's there's that's one of the big causes for poor water quality. The other thing that you might notice there, there's two different colors of blue dots there. One is a lighter blue. We took those during rainfall events. The darker blue ones are ones we took when it wasn't raining. As you can see, there really isn't any difference between them. Some are high, some are low. What that really tells us is, next slide please, that the sediment is a key source of the nutrients that are driving that. So we saw really high phosphorus during a runoff event, but low phosphorus otherwise, that would tell us that that phosphorus is coming in from runoff. Whereas because it just it's always high, that's coming from the sediment that's already there. Next slide please. On the E coli side, the concentrations appear to be primarily driven by waterfall. E coli in general is the same regardless of whether it comes from cows or pigs or humans. But each one has some genetic markers that come along with them. And so what we wanted to do is really kind of understand where that E coli was coming from, because that affects how we manage it. How do we, how do we reduce it? And the other test markers that we had really didn't show up, but waterfall showed up and it's quite high. I think that was a little bit of, I mean, yes, there are geese along there along the Cooley. I think I was personally expecting some cow markers and manure markers to show up, but they really didn't. So it's really driven by waterfall.
Pet waste?
No, pet waste did show up, but very low. So so the other ones were not detectable. Pet waste did show up as a very low, like it was there, but they couldn't necessarily quantify it because it was so low. So but yes, it's but where this waterfall was. You're right. Next slide please. Oh, and kind of pause if there's any questions on kind of the water quality specific. Other than questions?
Mr. Longstein, just a question on E coli. What's, I mean, that's not, we're not drinking that water. So is there, is it causing adding to the smell or is there a danger? Is it, I guess, what's the concern?
Yeah, so it's a, it is a danger. You know, as as those concentrations get high, if, let's say, animals, like if they, you know, are pets, you know, jump into the water or if, you know, if if we get down the path of improving the water quality from a smell and you know, algae standpoint, E coli doesn't necessarily come along for the ride for that. And so if somebody were to down the road, you know, put in a I or something or just wade into the water, and I'm saying people would do that today. It would have a hazard, so. Yeah.
Other questions?
What, what, you talked about some of the issues with the sediment and some of that sediment's five feet thick, deep, huh?
Correct. Yep.
And that's just been building up over time?
Yes, like how, like when it showed up, can't really say, but
I mean, that's a lot.
Yeah.
And the only real reason why in some cases there's water, even in English Cooley, is because of the dams that exist that hold the water back and the effect contributes to it.
Correct. Yep, it does slow the water down. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. So on the kind of on the sediment side, so what we found is, you know, if we we took a bunch of sediment dump samples along the Cooley from all the way from kind of the southern end, all the way up to north of Gateway Drive. And on average, about two to three feet of sediment throughout the Cooley. Definitely some hotspots, Suratama Park, over five feet. There is the the stock dam that is south of DeMers. A lot of sediment there as well and kind of the the warmer colors that you see in the graph there are areas where computed higher volumes of sediment. So it kind of gives you an idea where the hotspots are, one being in south of DeMers, near Suratama Park. And then also on the far north end, there's a private access drive that's a pretty much a chill point. A lot of sediment down there as well. Next slide please. We took, we made an estimate. This isn't, you know, I would say this is probably plus or minus thirty percent. From a estimate standpoint, about one hundred and ten thousand cubic yards of sediment, so three feet by three feet by three feet, hundred and ten thousand cubic yards of material. That's the Cooley. Next slide. There's a number of ways to remove sediment and one of the staff members at A two S actually used to was a dredging contractor. And so it's a lot of good connections to that industry as well as having done it himself. And in talking with them, you know, recognizing, you know, there's again, different ways to do it. Hydraulic dredging is the most reliable method to get that sediment out. When you say hydraulic dredging, what do we mean? So it's a, it's a barge. There would need to be a smaller barge, of course, given the the narrow width, the Cooley. And it's got a basically a screw cutter head that basically drills down kind of into the sediment, turns it up. And there's a suction pipe that basically pumps that kind of sediment water slurry out of the Cooley. And then you have to pump it into somewhere where it can deep water. And and there's different way. And so that where that deep waters is a little less or a little more flexible, because you're using pumping to kind of direct it where you want to go. But that is the the most reliable method to remove that sediment as opposed to I'm trying to get, you know, dozers or something down there, given that there's water sitting in the Cooley. Next slide please. The cost, if we were to do it all in one project, would be about eighteen million dollars. That includes some engineering permitting and the the one downside of hydraulic judging is that since you're pumping a lot of water as well, the cost kind of per cubic yard is fairly high as opposed to if you've got, you know, dozer or scraper, you know, bombing around. So, you know, the price tag is about eighteen million. Next slide please. The good news though is that there are outside funding options through a number of state or federal programs that could offset the overall cost. One of the ones that we had kind of kicked around is the Heritage Fund, you know, to be able to create a really improved recreational area that's an entity that could potentially kick in some funding as well. So that's kind of the thread of conclusions on the sediment removal. I kind of wanted to open it up to questions on that that aspect, those ones done.
Mr. Longstein?
If we remove the sediment, how long before it would kind of naturally come back?
Sure. Great question. So one of our recommendations, if that were to move forward, the the biggest contributor to sediment currently would be from kind of the storms who were outfalls, especially from winter sanding and things like that. We would recommend putting in, like coming up with a plan to just expand what the city is already doing, what the university is already doing by putting in controls that settle out a lot of that sediment before it gets to the Cooley. And and that would prolong the life of it quite a bit. We had estimated kind of back of the envelope that without any controls at all, about it was like two to five thousand cubic yards contribute each year. But if there's controls to settle out my half of that or two thirds of that, which are fairly spolied from a cost effective standpoint, it would take a long time to build up that same amount of sediment. And I also want to kind of know all sediment isn't the same. So the sediment that's there is almost likely legacy agricultural runoff. And so very high nutrients. And so, you know, whereas the sand, the sandings sediment that comes in, especially from winter sanding operations are more, is more inert. And so we give it an indication of, you know, you're talking, you know, decades before you get back to kind of where you're at now.
This one. So phosphorus and heavy amounts of business toxin. But there is a market for phosphorus. It's an essential ingredient in fertilizer, for instance. Is is there a market for? Is there any revenue and on the whole equation?
Sure. Possibly. The the key aspect would be what else is in that sediment that might make it more difficult. So if you have pesticides and things like that, that makes it a lot more challenging to land a plant or something like that. But if it if it is more just high nutrients, you know, there might be some demand agricultural setting. However, the flip side of that is most of the surrounding agricultural land drains to the Cooley in some form or another. And so that's a, that's a balancing act too. So.
The DeMers seems to be one particular choke point on on this system. Is is that true or is that a pretty free flow passage there at DeMers?
So just south of DeMers, well, DeMers, DeMers combined with the railroads crossings there during high flows can be a bit of a choke point. During low flows, it's primarily, there's a, there's a, an old stock dam or just south up there. Forget exactly where it is, but that's, that's really what's causing a lot of that sediment to drop out there.
So DeMers and the railroad or this this old stock dam you said?
Yeah, so like, so when I say stock dam, basically, there's a, you know, during low flows, there's a drop in the water level quite a bit. At that location during high flows, it's really choked off by by the different crossings. Those those low flow kind of old stock dams don't really affect it during high flows.
Thanks. Okay.
Next slide please. So this is the same time that we looked at one of the previous slides that stormed, we got in August of two thousand twenty one. The black line is what we observed. The blue line was what the FEMA models said would have would have happened during that same rainfall event. And the orange line is the new models that we built for this project. So much more accurate, it doesn't trace that line exactly. One of the reasons why is that, you know, it's only an inch and a half rainfall. We didn't have any larger rainfalls and we were hesitant to tweak the knobs more, recognizing what we're really concerned about is when it rains, you know, three, four, or five inches. If we had that storm, we'd be able to dial it in a little bit more. So much better tool for looking at how those water levels fluctuate on the Cooley. And this will also be helpful for the ongoing south end flood protection project that's also going on separate from this. Next slide please. So this chart that's on the bottom is if you took a line along English Cooley and kind of cut it in half and kind of looked at it from the side. So on the far right is the levee prior to going to the Red River. On the far right is where the legal drain nine splits off from an English Cooley diversion. And then all the the brown lines that kind of go up and down, those are different road crossings along the way. What's in yellow that kind of steps down through the system is what the water levels that govern the flood point maps along English Cooley currently. The line in blue is what our new and better model shows for what would be flood risk during a hundred year vet. So a little bit higher, one to two feet, but I also recognize one to two feet in Grand Forks means a lot. And so flood risk in the city is, let's say, more severe than what the FEMA maps would in otherwise indicate. Slide please. So you see an asterisk asterisk on the on the end of that second bullet. One of the things that was with this new model, what we assumed to start with was that the culverts weren't blocked with sediment. But we do know that some of those culverts are partially blocked with sediment. And so we're working with Melanie to kind of figure out, okay, what are the implications of that? Next slide please. So instead of taking a kind of a side view along the Cooley, we took a side view coming across the Cooley. What this shows us is that, and then the different horizontal lines, the dark blue is a frequent event or a frequent rainfall event. The the dark red lines are in the very severe, very frequent events. And what this shows us is that during those very severe events, because the water level kind of in the Cooley, which is middle and the water level that's in the flooded areas of the of the Grand Forks, they're about the same during those severe events that we really have to understand how the Cooley and then changes to the Cooley might impact flooding to the residential and the business areas that were throughout Grand Forks. So getting those two to work together is important. Next slide.
Okay, I had a question. This is kind of interesting here. Is that based on gravity overflow sewers or is that force mains?
That accounts for the force mains that that go there. And so the pumping system, obviously, if there's no surface connection there, the pumping system would keep it somewhat isolated. But there's enough surface connections during a flooding event where the Cooley can basically kind of back flood.
Now, where we we rather the storms who are around all through health system.
Yep.
And so even, I mean, this could impact upstream of that as you're looking at all the drainage area to the east.
Yep. On the flip side, and this really comes into play with the south end flood protection master plan. So this is the English Cooley diversion, same thing. We're looking at the side. On the far right is where it dumps out into Red River. On the far left or yes, far left is the upstream end of the diversion channel. And what the FEMA model says is there's a lot of water coming to the diversion channel than there really is. So the yellow lines, what FEMA says that flood level is, the blue line is what the the new with better models say. So more capacity diversion channel than what FEMA currently senses. Next slide. Next slide. So we're wrapping up um the the work that we've been having uh doing with phase two. Uh, we're doing some screening level evaluation on the sediment impacts of copper beings partially blocked. Uh, finalizing that phase two report um and then discussing potential next phase if it makes sense. So next slide. So what that what is, what is that potential phase three scope? So um, we can do a lot of things with the Cooley as the sediment sits there. Nothing really is gonna is gonna move the needle um one way or the other. Um, could put in our fall controls for storm sewers, that would help. But it actually wouldn't change the waterfall in Cooley. So if there's an interest in changing how the Cooley looks and smells in the summer. Starts with the sediment that's already there. Next slide. Uh, and again, evaluating how those changes, um, again, because we don't want to affect flood risk. Uh, within um areas, transportation corridors, businesses, residents. Next slide. Uh, mentioned this with how long, uh, along with the dredging last, um, put together master plan for reducing. Uh, sediment contributions to the Cooley, particularly from um storm sewer outfalls into the Cooley. Excite. And then uh finally consider some uh potential can use population management. I say population management. Can keys are protected by the migratory bird act, um, even though some of them don't want uh migrate migrate anymore. Um, so there has to be less um uh permanent solutions to how uh can use our manage. Um, because uh they definitely contribute to bacteria. That's that's the last slide.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so if there are any other questions that you might have or if we could follow up with anything, I'll leave these for you.
Questions from this party. Again, you talked about eleven down yourself and there gets to be a lot of debris that collects behind that and the order has to be. Significant that I have a lot of complaints on that. Is there a regular methodology of cleaning that then? Uh, because obviously the surface of of that is above the box cover, so there's no way that's gonna flow. It's just gonna continue to collect and that's probably at other crossings too. So what's what's the current plan for maintenance?
We're looking at from a. Like an annual maintenance of being able to go on there and monitor and and address any issues on a weekly basis that we need to. Um, with the current stack that we have, we have done some dredging of some of those areas that we have noticed that they've kind of become congested. And you just can't, you can't get flow through, obviously, we want to make sure that they're still functioning. But that's just kind of helping to get us, you know, it's just putting a band-aid over the bigger issue.
Yeah, because there is, I mean, like I said, it almost looks hazardous when you go up there and you smell all of that. It needs to be, this party, who is weed, who's weed that are.
Uh, the city of Grand Forks, uh Stormwater Waste Wonder Crews have been looking at it and.
Just. Correct me if I'm wrong, when you started out by saying that there are many different owners of the. Right, so who who owns that section of the Cooley?
That particular piece, I believe, is owned, I mean, up next to it is, I think Ultra on one side, maybe the Park District on the other, but.
So are they are they contributing to paying for for that cleanup and dredging?
Currently, no, currently the city is is dredging it to make sure that we have flow through there.
We should continue having conversations about who's going to be responsible for paying for this. Because if you're gonna ask me or Ken, as a property owner, to pay for the dredging behind my property or cleanup. The people that own that property like on U N D campus, they should be paying for that themselves. Unless we're gonna take a more holistic approach to it, which is fine too.
Yes, absolutely, and we really haven't got to that point yet, but um. I think going forward, we definitely need to look at partners. Um, we did have you in the at the table, um, so when we talked about where we're at with phase two, Mr. Pepper. Was um there in present and we've had all two ultrasay, they're definitely interested. And those are just the larger property owners, correct, Park District, but for each individual residence, we've just been trying to keep them updated on what we're doing and.
I I think you're right, we need to have much bigger conversation in that because we also look, need to look where the source of it is coming from. Not just the various, the property owners that happen to be where it's on the, correct, you know, it's where is it coming from and who's causing? This word?
Just uh for, just for clarification, so this is the results of phase two. Um, some general indications that dredging is going to be a recommendation. But phase three, we'll look at that in more detail, come back with more specific funding or. Operational recommendations and and funding opportunities.
Yes, that's what we're looking at.
And and when would we anticipate phase three?
I would guess we continue working on it through late this year into next year.
So maybe this time next year of best three. Pretty good, thanks.
Great information, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'm two point three uh radiation measurements uh and Mr. Bedar, before we get into your presentation. Mr. Soski, now visiting earlier, um, we, I know I've had the opportunity to read through the information that you've already provided us online. I think Miss Sotowski did too, and she just had a couple of follow up questions. But rather than have you spend a bunch of time doing a presentation, the thought we just let Miss Soski. Ask her questions directly and then and then see how things go from there, if that if that's okay with you.
That's fine, thank you, President Sandy.
Thank you.
This was, thank you, President Sandy. Um, I did, I just really had questions on the actual um. Items that we placed on our lights, correct? That's where these all tap into the power system, right?
For the, I don't know the details of what uh is planned to be installed. I couldn't speak to that, I was just gonna try to provide information about the about the magnetic fields um spectrum we're continuing.
I guess really what I was just looking for is maybe if we could do just a little bit of our own monitoring on these devices. Just to make sure that they really are within the FCC regulations. Instead of just taking the word of Verizon that they are okay. Also, do you happen to know um how much power these devices will?
I don't. Be tapped to as on on the particular devices, um. Basically, what uh, you know, I went back and I reviewed um the electromagnetic spectrum. And uh, it's it's very broad, certainly when we talk radiation. You know, my mind goes to ionizing radiation, something that would have enough energy to break off electrons and chemical bonds and cause. Um, health harm.
Like radon?
Like radon would be one, we recommend everyone test their homes intermediate for radon. Um, we're at the lower frequencies and the spectrum is orders of magnitude. You change decimal place zeros twenty four times across the spectrum, more than that even. And so we're on the lower end, there is energy radiating uh from this, you know, kind of the basic definition of radiation is just. Energy radiate out from. So we're at the low end of the spectrum, um, the safe distance from these towers for workers are measured in centimeters to meters. Um, and from what I've seen from the research on it, essentially your mobile device is what you're getting most of your radiation from. In this spectrum, um, five G is actually looking to reduce your exposure by using different ranges of the spectrum. Um, the longer frequency wavelength is better for transmitting over distances. Uh, but those those higher wavelength, uh shorter wavelength ones need more data. And as you go into more data and more technology use in time, if we can use those higher frequencies, which is what they're moving to in different ranges, it actually. We get more for the same amount of exposure. And what I did find is without knowing the person's actual usage of their phone and what technologies and towers and everything that they're using. Uh, especially the distance of your phone to yourself and the signal that it's receiving, we really couldn't properly address it. Um, but if you believe it, they can't yet.
I just want to know if once a year, we can go out ourselves as the city of Grand Forks, instead of just. Yes, Verizon is telling us the truth, yes, the FCC is telling us the truth. Obviously, we need to use the FCC to go along with their guideline. I just want us to go out there, test the radiation ourselves, see where it falls on 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 the ground, right? That that's what I'm asking, instead of just saying. Yes, Verizon told us this was safe and that this isn't gonna happen. I mean, I believe when that woman was standing up here the other day, she said that the frequencies on these can be turned up and down. Is is that true? I asked her, and I mean, can they be, can it be done remotely? Do these devices have potential to pump out higher levels of radiation? You know, they might not be set that high right now because the FCC doesn't allow that. But is there potential that these can do that? And and so those are really the questions that I have. It's not so much about reading the FCC website, you know, I can do that myself. It's about what are these devices that are actually going to be drawing from our power grid here in Grand Forks that that we are allowing them to put up? And that's what I want to know, and I know you can't tell me that right now. I would just like to know that maybe we could go and look at it, go test it once in a while and be like, hey, Rebecca. You know, we're within guidelines and Verizon didn't lie to us. So that's what I, that's what I would really like to know, just in. Like, how how much power are these gonna be drawing and? Just what is the actual potential of these devices?
So I wish there was a simple answer I could give you on that. Um, it's beyond my area of expertise as we all started for the complexities involved in identifying. Where these are coming from, because we have AM radio waves, FM radio waves. Uh, there is a lot of use of these waves from our police departments, radios and everything. Uh, that we have, I downloaded one of those apps, my phone. Um, to identify, well, what is my exposure, you got me curious, curiosity. And uh, my home wifi is my number one exposure is what I'm finding too of just. Um, what I'd say to you is, you know, what's concerning to me is in the ionizing spectrums, which is magnitudes higher than this. Um, this does involve energy, um, you know, we might like to sit by the the heat of the stove and radiant heat in the winter in our long months. Um, and that's really what we're talking about here is it's it's an energy transfer. Um, the health concern effect would be from overheating.
Can we get it tested? That's what I'm, I can 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 the city of Grand Forks do that without like spending a bunch of money or anything like that? Can we test the radiation that is going to come off these specific devices that we are, you know, renting space to from Verizon? That's my question, can you do that?
No doubt there's a meter that could, articulating identifying where it's coming from. I don't think it's good.
So we can't stand right underneath them, say.
You can measure it underneath it, but. How much is it and how much is something?
So we're just supposed to take the word of Verizon that they are within the FCC guidelines? Yes.
Want to take a shot at this, you know, outside my area of expertise, but the. The permits, applications are gonna come through the engineering department, we're gonna analyze the locations. I mean, you know, what they're trying to do is is basically put these on. Street lighting, that's a little bit of a misnomer because you can't just tack it onto an existing street light effectively. What they're gonna do is take it down, put up a different one, that's gonna have a light and a and a transmitting can on it. But I think uh especially um now that there are there are apps that we can download for that. I think we can go out periodically and just do some testing, you know, two feet away, five feet away, something like that. And just do some sort of an annual or quarterly type test, especially as they first come up, I think we can do that. It's not gonna maybe catch all of the spectrums and all of those things, but I think at least you have basically a litmus test. To see if if what what we are measuring looks like it's within general parameters. I could be wrong, because again, I'm outside my area of expertise, but I'm just going by, if there's an app on the phone that we can do some testing, we can use that kind of. Uh, tester out there relatively easily, just see what the data starts to show.
Thank you very much, I just want us to be, you know, responsible as a city and make sure we do our own research a little bit. Instead of just blindly following along with what, you know, other people are saying, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and did anyone else have any other questions? The discussion, thank you, Jamie, very much, Mr. Bedar, very, very much appreciated. All right, moving on, uh, I'm feeling discussion at three point one budget amendment project eighty five seventy five twenty seven thousand north water now. Danielson, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So the first thing I got for you tonight is the water main project that's happening up on twenty seven that we north. This is a newly annexed area by the highway one uh area. So this project, if you might recall, already has an assessment district created, redesigned, we bid it. It has already been awarded to Fager Contract in a little bitter for the project. And you may also recall this project also has a sixty percent cop there with the uh North Coast State Water Commission. So what I'm here tonight to is to discuss the remaining forty percent of the project. We did create a special assessment district for the project and our intention the whole time has been to special assess that remaining forty percent. However, the city has agreed to cover that forty percent assessment excluding the lot that Foo Fun owns out there, that greenfield development site. So our initial intention on this remaining forty percent that the city is gonna cover was to utilize a state revolving fund loan or an S R F loan. These typically give you a lower interest rate, but they do come with some strings attached that usually make the project a little bit more expensive, but sometimes it balances out. So our initial intention was to utilize that S R F loan, but we are now finding that on this project, it would actually be more economical to just. Fund the project or that remaining forty percent directly out of the city funds. So it's more or less cost neutral at this point, and if we don't use the S R F loan, we don't have to follow some of those strict requirements. So at this time, we're just looking for any necessary budget amendments to make that change, to pivot from the S R F loan to just directly funding out of the water fund fifty three hundred.
Mr. Soski, question?
Um, I just want to make sure I clearly understand, so. Wu Fang is special assessed for this, correct? So. I I'm guessing they still own the property, I haven't heard, do we, do we expect them to pay this stuff? Or, I mean, they're behind on their taxes, aren't they? I believe they are, but.
That I.
Yeah, so how much money are they supposed to put up? Like with their special assessments.
I believe that. So the remaining forty percent on this project, based on the bid prices, is at about seven hundred fifty or forty five thousand. They, I can't remember exactly what the Special Assessment Commission gave them for a benefit of the whole project, but. I want to say it's somewhere around that, you know, forty-ish percent of that seven hundred and forty, so you're probably looking at like three hundred ish thousand. I don't have all the numbers right in front of me.
So then if they sell that land, though, those special assessments.
Those are married.
So whoever, okay. Okay.
Other questions, I missed one, we've removed, I remember, second by Michael, any other comments? There are none, all those in the papers, sign the papers, hang on, hang on. Post in sign, she carries unanimously, thank you, um, three point two, great district city project A four eighty nine. District five ninety nine sanitary sewer phase one for highway one associated area, yes.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So same area of town up in that newly annexed highway eighty one area, so now we're pivoting over to the sanitary sewer. You'll likely recall that, again, we have a certain assessment district created, we designed the project and we bid the project as a large sanitary buildup that covers the entire area. And we got one bid on the project and it was rejected because it was quite high. So since then, we've been working with our consultants to figure out how we break this project out into some smaller, more bite sized pieces. And that provides us with a couple of different benefits, it allows us to finance the project over a longer period of time. And then we also made a couple of different tweaks in the uh the phasing, just to try and make it a little more enticing for contractors to provide some lower uh bid prices on the project. So um what we've got right now is phase one, which we're considering the the trunk sanitary sewer in the area. And the trunk sanitary sewer is just the really deep and larger pipe that's closest to the lift station. So we're prioritizing that deep and large pipe, just because in the future build out with utilities in this area, there is some. Um, upcoming utilities that are gonna be over the top of that deep trunk sanitary sewer. So we're gonna try and prioritize that piece of it first and then get that built and then we'll start tackling some of those other phases, so. Um, right now, we're looking at just that first phase. Um, we're gonna go through the whole process again, create a new special assessment district and then. Assign benefits to just this project because things are gonna change a little bit now that we're breaking it out into individual runs. But right now, this one is intended to be approached very similarly to the water where the assessment district will be created. But the city has agreed to cover the assessments for all of the properties except the Foo Fun lot, so it'll be the same setup as before. But the city has agreed to cover the assessments for all of the properties except the Foo Fun lot. So it'll be the same setup as before. Um, we are intending to use an SRF loan to cover the city's portion of what we're covering. For this project and then our assumption of those assessments right now, based on engineering's. Interpretation of the special assessment policy is always contingent on how the special assessment commission. Um, delegates those benefits, but right now we are anticipating that the city's portion would be about one point eight eight million. And then the assessment that goes to that Foo Fun lot would be two point four eight million on this project. So right now, we're just looking to create or approve a new engineer support, create a new district. And then direct engineering staff to prepare the final specs and advertise for construction for just the first phase.
Questions? So i- if we were any other part of the city. Um, we have a responsibility to put in a sanitary infrastructure. And normally we would assess all of the property owners. Uh, in this case, uh, the city agreed to take on that cost burden for all of the property owners except for the, for Foo Fun. They will pay their share. Um, and that's what we're, we've just moved to approve. Thanks. For the comments? Wish carries unanimously, thank you. Item three point three, construction engineering agreement project eight two fifty nine urban traffic signal location, Mr. Danison.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So this project, a woman I've been up here with a handful of times before. It is a signal rehabilitation project that is going to approach twelve different signalized intersections across the city on our urban system. And do a variety of different rehab techniques. This one does have like, I think it's about three point one million dollars in federal funding attached to it at this point. So, um, it's all been bid out, Parsons Electric was a little bitter and it was awarded to Parsons. At this point, we were just looking to get a construction engineer on board to do the construction management of the project. Because there's federal fund attached to it, we had to follow the DOP process, which involved the competitive selection. And for that selection, we had two firms submit proposals and SRF was, um, selected as the most qualified for the project. Their scope and fee for the services of engineering are two hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and twenty two dollars. And we're just looking for approval to, um. Get that contract rolling.
Moves to approve, second by V. Any comments?
Over the last couple of years, efforts like this have been affected by supply chain efforts. Have those resolved themselves at this point?
We're still seeing some longer lead times on a lot of the signal equipment and sometimes on streetlights, mainly just the basis for streetlights, but. We're anticipating there might be on this project, some delays for seventeenth and twentieth. We're actually going to install a whole new signal system there. It's, there's one there already, but we're going to replace all the equipment. So we might see some delays on that one, just because we're getting, you know, new poles and mast arms, things like that. But for a lot of the other sites, we're doing just, uh, like signal heads, wiring, things like that, that are usually a little bit easier to get.
Thanks. Any other questions on three three? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Posting sign, which carries unanimously, thank you, Mr. Danison. Item three four. Information only project eighty six eighty six, Phoenix Elementary School Safety Study, Mr. Cranko.
Thank you, President Sandy and members of the committee. Um, as you may recall, back in about January, Councilmember Lunskey proposing a school safety study. And around the elementary school. Area. Um, and about March, Council ended approving the engineering agreement to Bolton Bank. And here tonight with me is Blue Webber with Bolton Bank to give a brief update on where we're at.
Mr. Webber, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, so really this presentation is just to give you all a little bit of context of the entire project. It's major scope, uh, around the intersection and all of the things. So, uh, next slide. Uh, so like I said, just a brief kind of overview of the entire project, looking at those six different intersections. Uh, everything from analyzing the vehicular traffic, pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic. And really looking at how it interacts with the school and looking at the surrounding intersection. So, uh, next slide. It's just a brief, uh, I, on the project timeline for you all. Uh, like Mr. Cranko said, February was when we really had our kickoff. Uh, over March and April, we did a lot of our data collection. Uh, in May was our public input session and, uh, this was something that was kind of near and dear to my heart. It's right next to my house and it was on my third day of work that I got to come in and run this public input. So it's very important intersection, not just for me as an employee, but also for me as a community member. Um, and so, uh, from here, what we'll be doing is really kind of coming up with a concept. Uh, evaluation, really going back to those stakeholders, talking to them. And then bringing it back to you guys with a study memorandum that will detail everything from the public input. Uh, to the findings that we have and all the analysis on that. So, next slide. Um, so with the big part of that study memorandum, uh, what you're going to see here is our data collection. So this is everything from those, the intersection data, um, monitoring pedestrian flow, some drone footage. We'll get down to here that you guys can go and see it yourself. Uh, and then looking at the previous studies, so, uh, what has been said, what maybe we'll be taking into account other different things. Uh, so that's going to be our safety analysis, looking at that five year crash data. And then, uh, like I said, the six intersections. And so that will be all part of the study memorandum, which you guys can, next slide. So from there, we had our public input. Uh, this was on May fifteenth. Uh, what we did was we have these boards, we held it at Phoenix Elementary as an opportunity for the neighborhood to really come and. Hear about the project and give us their feedback. So, uh, similar to what was already shown. We showed a timeline, we explained the intersection that we're looking at and kind of what to view about that. Uh, and so with the next slide, you can see, uh, our maps and some of the comment cards that we had out as well. So these were eight foot by three foot maps to expose to intersections, so both Ford Street and Belmont and Reeves. Um, and then we gave people the opportunity to come out and give their comments, not just, uh, the ten thousand foot level up. But really getting into the nitty gritty of which intersections maybe have bigger problems, which parking lots have problems. And what some of the concepts were that they saw or that they had as the neighborhood. Um, and so one of the things that was really amazing was not just the amount of people that were showing up, which was fifteen, not the hugest amount. But it was people who were in that neighborhood. So we had people who were directly adjacent to Phoenix Elementary. It was really nice to hear from them. Um, and so with the next slide, you'll see just a little bit of what that drone footage looked like. Uh, highly encourage you to go back and watch this. Uh, this is both in the morning and then also afternoon. What's really nice is that this is a three D camera, so you can actually look around at the area. It's, it's pretty nice to be able to watch the traffic flow and be able to look up and down Belmont, be able to look over to Chestnut. Look over to Reeves, so you can see where families are coming from, where bikes are coming in. Also the traffic patterns as it's coming from eastbound as well as going northbound. Uh, so there is a link on here, uh, you can go and watch this. A lot of amazing footage, so highly encourage you to go and watch it.
That three D function was not intuitive. I went and watched a bunch of the videos and I thought I, all I was watching is. Pointing directly west and not a lot.
Exactly. And so that's why I wanted to bring it up was, uh, while you're on the screen, you can actually click and drag and move the camera around. It's, it's a, if you did not know that, yeah, it's kind of a very static looking footage. Uh, and so next slide is where we just kind of. Agglomerated some of the, uh, public input. And so this was just some of the input that we heard from that neighborhood. So everything from Chestnut Road being used, uh, a little bit more as a drop off pickup spot. Uh, modifying that south parking lot for better optimization is a spot that has no parking signage. And it really becomes a very big hazard during that pickup net drop off time. Uh, as well as talking about things like the west side of the school to a primary pickup side. Uh, and then one of the other things, at least for me, that was really important was talking about maybe getting away from that intersection. So looking at some of the other parking lots that are around that area and modifying those, modifying the alleyways, staggering drop off, pick up times. So these are all the things that really we're going to go back and look at. Uh, as well as reintroducing the traffic signal at that intersection is something that was brought up by a couple. Um, yeah, and with that, uh, if there is more comments, if you have neighbors or if you have people who want to comment. Please share my contact information. We want to continue to hear from everybody about this.
Lou, is there, am I missing videos? When I click on the link? I go from two forty six to three oh one P M. And it seems like there was missing a video. I go straight to three P M, or three ten P M to three twenty six.
They should be listed there as a, like a playlist or less.
Yeah, but we're missing nine minutes of videos.
If I had to guess, that's, uh, probably when they had to bring the drone back down, swap batteries.
Video again, so I think three oh one to three ten is. I know when I pick up my kid from school, that's the optimal time.
Um, let me chat with Jacob. He was unable to be on the call tonight, but I'll chat with him and see what other footage we have. Um, just another note, one of the reasons that Bolton made brought me in is, this is my background, is really trying to take these studies, this information and implementing them. Oldman is trying to take a lot more of an active approach to seeing these studies through, not just during the study time, but also implementable projects. And being able to work with community based organizations to be able to get those projects up off the ground.
Any other questions? So, thank you for the, for your presentation.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
And, uh, yeah, keep us posted. Uh, three point five engineering agreement project eighty six eighty eight, ADA transportation plan, Mr. Danison.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So what I've got for you now is, it's a consulting agreement for the development of an ADA transition plan. And ADA transition plan, it covers quite a bit, but I think broken down in a pretty simple explanation. There's accessibility barriers that exist on public facilities and private facilities for us, we'd be in the public sector obviously, but. There's accessibility barriers and a plan like an ADA transition plan essentially documents. What are all these accessibility barriers and then how and when do you plan to fix them? And an ADA transition plan is actually a federal requirement that's required for all public entities with fifty or more employees. And it's expected that pretty soon here in the near future, we're going to have to have a plan like that in place in order to receive federal funding on a variety of projects. So we as a city actually do have an ADA transition plan. However, that plan is a little bit dated. It hasn't been updated quite as frequently as it needs to be. And it also has a pretty heavy emphasis on the facilities aspect of the ADA transition plan, which is. Buildings like City Hall, any city owned property, it really focuses on the facilities. What we're posing here tonight is a supplement to that plan. That's going to expand and cover the right of way aspect of an ADA transition plan. So that's going to get into your elements like your ADA curb ramps or crosswalks, your bus stops, things like that, that are all within the right of way, not necessarily on city property. So even though our current transition plan doesn't necessarily include all those elements in the right of way. We do have a longstanding budget item. That's, I, I believe it's been fifty thousand for the longest time now. Of going out and addressing different ADA infrastructure in the right of way. So we're already taking some of those steps without the plan. This, uh, an engineering agreement would be for a consultant to prepare the plan that mirrors that. So we would essentially be taking the existing policies and procedures that we already have for the right of way. Um, ADA pieces here and then also implementing whatever we would need moving forward. So we actually sent this mail for competitive selection to get a consultant on board. We had three different consultants submit proposals and SRF consulting was selected as the most qualified for this one. They've actually put together the ADA transition plans for East Grand Forks, Morehead and West Fargo. So they're pretty familiar with putting plans like this together in the area and we think they'll do a, a pretty good job on this one. Um, there's open fee for this, uh, preparing this plan is forty nine thousand eight hundred and ninety three dollars. And we're just looking for approval on the contract if they're going.
ADA coordinator, this is a city employee.
Typically in mind, from what I've seen, yes, there would be a city employee.
So we would be, uh, part of the plan would be hiring someone in the coming year.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be its own position. You can make an existing person within the city. Sounds like you just found one.
Any other questions or comments? Posting sign, which carries unanimously, thank you. Three point six M P M project update and letter of intent extension, Mr. Phelan.
Good on self-president Sandy. Uh, I'm joined here by Larry Mackey. He's the chief operating officer of Northern Banksland, otherwise known as N B N. And so it's our six month review of, uh, getting an update from Mr. Mackey. And the importance of the letter of intent is that we're intending to preserve six point eight. Millions gallons per day of our gray water, uh, point nine M G D of our portable water and then also work with them on the stormwater. Uh, planning and, uh, we should also live so long and this project does seriously move forward and gets funding. That will mean that, um, we'll go from a letter of intent to a development agreement that we're well acquainted with at this point in time. But with that, I don't, um. I mean, energy is looking at using about four or five hundred thousand gallons of our gray water. Has been talked for probably around eight to nine million gallons per day of wastewater that we treat on it. So, um, I don't think there's anybody knocking on our door, so I, I would recommend extending it for another six months. And with that, I'd ask Mr. Mackey if you got a, a brief update on where you're at, Mr. Mackey.
Oh, thank you very much for the, excuse me, for the invitation. Um. We continue to work on this project. Uh, we have. Three potential investors that we're work, that we're working with, uh, presently. One of them, uh, you had, uh, some contact with, um. Some time ago, and if you remember. And we have two others that, uh, that we're actively working with. I, I expect that we're going to receive funding from one of these. Um, there's no doubt in my mind because this project is, is so good. As I've told you that before. If, uh, if I'm thinking about anywhere in the world to build a, a new fertilizer project, there's no better spot than this one in Grand Forks. For many reasons. One, the, the most, uh, and. It's the best market in the United States. The United States is one of the best markets in the world. And the location is absolutely perfect. We're, we're, uh. We're working on a new website. We've got in, uh, several new team members that Clark Bailey has brought to, to our team. And, uh, one of them is, uh, is working on a, a new we- uh, website. When, when you see it, you'll agree with me that it is going to be world class. Um, we're also working on a new financial model. That will be very useful in working with these potential investors and that new model should be, uh. Should be up and working, uh, it this week. Clark and I looked at it, Clark Bailey and I looked at it yesterday. I, uh. I think that's a, a good overview of where we're at. We continue to work on this project every day. And, uh, we're very fortunate to have, uh, Clark Bailey on our team.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
Any other comments? Um, Dave, would you be interested in purchasing some Cooley phosphorus?
No, thank you. I, I listened to that and, uh, I don't think you can sell that as fertilizer.
All right, there's a motion to second all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Posting sign, which carries unanimously, we'll see you in six months, Mr. Mackey, or hopefully sooner.
Sooner. And it won't be for the, hopefully it's not for this, uh, extension again. Thank you, thank you very much.
On three point seven, wastewater treatment facility phase one and two improvements, Mr. Phelan.
House president Sandy, I have several slides, but I'll go through them quick here just to give you an overview idea to attach them. So, uh, next slide, John. And then we talk a lot about facility plans. Why do we need some facility plans for these, uh, facilities like wastewater treatment plant? We do it, uh, number one, the North Dakota Department of, uh. Environmental, uh, has to approve these and that's how we get funding. So when we come up here and talk about SRF loans without a facility plan. Uh, we can move forward with various funding. So I'm going to go through this, um, kind of what we're moving forward with. I then, at the end, I want to ask Darren Pinkstead here, who's with the firm, he's the owner of, uh, PKG. Who's going to be our construction manager, going to have him come up and give you a sense of what phase one and two is looking like and, uh. Good guy with a good company and, and we're fortunate to have. So, next slide. Next slide. Kind of here's where we're at. We started, as you recall, in twenty twenty one with this facility plan and then, uh, Foo Fun USA. Uh, came along the way and we looked at expanding this, we adapted, we expanded the facility plan. Uh, we were looking at enlarging our facility. We're, we're kind of back to where we, we were in twenty twenty one with this current facility. Under a phase one and, and two approach at this particular time, along the way and maybe to the next slide. First, what we did as far as, um. This wastewater treatment plant, we started, uh, the current one. We started the current one was started to be planned in the mid nineteen nineteen nineties. Um, started construction in the late nineteen nineties. Um, that can, we started up in two two thousand and three, had some challenges along the way, couple lawsuits. Uh, but really in the end, it served the community well. Would not have wanted to be here um, as public works director here in the early two thousands, trying to explain what we were trying to do, but it all worked out, you know, and I'm still here. So that's great. But it served the community really uh, well along the way. And along the way, we also re-rated this facility. So you can see along the top, why are we doing what we're doing? You can see um, we've rerated this facility from flow to uh, biological biological oxygen demand, um, total suspended solid solids in the last one is nitrogen. We've we've uh, went back um, and analyzed it and maxed it out as much with the state of the country as we can. And you can see really what our challenges are on the industrial strength side. So you can see we're 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 tipping the top from ninety-nine percent to eighty-six to ninety-four. And so when we bring the wastewater treatment plant is probably, well, it it's in the top tier of our economic development goals. Um, so we talked a lot about uh, what we have to gain really this wastewater treatment plant as we just talked with N P N. Without our wastewater affluent, um, you probably don't have an extra fertilizer plant. So you can also see, if you look at down in the domestic and industry, you can see we're we're um, really heavily loaded on industry in our community. You can, as highlighted by J R Simba and other acre businesses, we have. So you can see the amount of capacity our industry takes versus just regular domestic. So Grand Forks certainly is not a a suburban community. We're really heavy in industrial and as we move forward. Along the way, we have added uh, East Grand Forks. We added East Grand Forks in around twenty sixteen. And so that was a nice integration with our our wastewater treatment plant and it saved uh, East Grand Forks a lot of a headache, being able to integrate with the city of Grand Forks. Excellent. This is our, this is the existing wastewater treatment plant with the the four domes. Um, is if as part of the original plan of this particular facility, um, we were gonna add capacity by adding more of those um, particular basins or domes that you see there. Um, what we're gonna show you with what we're looking at now, we're gonna go away from that strategy, not add a, you know, a fifth or sixth dome, but we're gonna add something to the right in in more of a rectangular uh, view. The other thing we we talked to you back in twenty twenty-one, we're looking at uh, not only perhaps trying to get more out of those four domes or expanding to uh, another dome. We're also gonna go inside those basins and and put some of this P fast that we're gonna add industrial capacity. Um, along the way, um, even to include discussions of PKG, that wasn't a very tenable um, solution. And so uh, through the uh, the pandemic, um, things kind of changed, but how you can get some of these resources. And so we could, we've adapted that plan to have to pick a better plan than we're looking at in twenty twenty-one. Next slide. Here's what we're looking at now. You can see it in the uh, in the left um, foreground or a background. You can see where the existing wastewater treatment plant is. So we're going with this. Um, a more rectangular um, B N R facility um, that we we think is a better way for us to treat our heavier industrial flows. So we can keep it separate from um, separated from some of the domestic flows. We think that's positive. The other thing we don't, we won't disrupt our existing wastewater treatment plant water. We're constructing that. And so we think that's another viable solution. And again, similar to the epitome energy and the N P N discussion, this will allow us to have a better reuse potential. Like um, with this treatment process, it'll create some really high-value uh, wastewater um, affluent that we can sell to the market um, in our industry. Or a lot of this industry is in and around this area. So we find this to be a more valuable area. Next slide. So what we looked at is uh, the the hashed red is are those areas that um, we've eliminated um, from our current planning because that was I'm going to serve the Hufang site. So along the way, we have right-sized this so that it's gonna fill our our current needs, but also look out to twenty forty-five with um, potential new industries, growth in our communities, um, so that we can look out at least uh, twenty years in in the future. Next slide. Um, what I'm asking for tonight is uh, we have to move forward with phase one for phase one a little bit. Um, we're looking at a modified scope for phase two, and then we're gonna defer some of the bio-solids. Melanie's been up here talking talking to you about our lagoons and what we've been doing as an alternative strategy to reduce some of our uh, sort of solids in our lagoons. We're looking at that as as opposed to building mechanical and um, facilities at this point in time. Next slide. Next slide. Um, I'm gonna have Darren come up here from PKG and he's gonna talk to what's going on in the construction industry. Um, is he gonna talk about these two partic- particular indexes and and speak to those in particular? Next slide. I think I would just point out below in all those two indexes, one's eleven percent, the other thirty-three. Uh, I would point to the the number down below, which is forty-two percent. So when we get to phase two of this particular project, it's gonna be a lot of concrete work. And so that forty-two percent um, represents um, concrete inflation that has occurred uh, with this. That's a huge challenge. And so when we look at phase two, that's gonna be a lot of, that is a lot of concrete and a lot of basins. And so we're gonna be impacted by some of that construction inflation and I'll have Darren speak to that part uh, specifically. Next slide. Again, PKG is our, he'll come up there and come up next slide. Next slide. And these are some of the things I'm asking Darren to talk about. What's some of the challenges that are going on in our region? Um, and from manpower to concrete to um, all the various large projects that are in our region to move with the F M diversion. Next slide. I'm gonna point out two projects. If you look at the upper left, you see the Fargo wastewater treatment facility that uh, PKG is just finishing up right now. And they bid that in twenty twenty. And you know, when uh, Mayor and I were up there along with you, we pushed a lot of projects um, during the pandemic, a lot of mixed-use developments, those four, five or six of them. Um, just because it's the right time to move those projects forward. It's quite fortunate that we did those then, not now because of because of inflation. I just wanna point out um, the hundred and twenty-four million dollar wastewater treatment plant um, that's completed versus we asked PKG what that looks like today and it's two hundred million dollars plus. So you can see that what's going on in our industry. The other one to our far right that uh, here in Grand Forks, we're often proud of. Uh, in twenty sixteen, we bid the water treatment plant and the construction cost was almost a hundred and thirty-four millions as part of a hundred and fifty million dollar um, investment. And then we did go back and look at that today, it'd be about two hundred and forty-nine. So we did get a lot of value out of that facility and and um, is working quite well um, today and in in the future. So we're fortunate to when we did that. Excellent. Um, I think the C Mar again, I think it's gonna improve outright. Um, we're talking about almost a hundred million dollar uh, wastewater treatment plant renewal and expansion, which is a big number. Which will let us into some of the following, the final slides here. What are it gonna be? The impacts? Um, next slide. These are some of the phase one work. Um, in phase one is really renewing the existing wastewater treatment plant that I gave you an overhead. Not phase two is really building all those new assets um, that I went over. Next slide. So today, we're working on, um, we've, we're, the PKG did a bit of phase one improvements, received several packages. We did do some deducts and things we didn't think we needed to move forward with. And that's what's in front of you today with phase two, which is that larger, larger piece to come um, later this year and into early next, next slide. So we're asking you to approve that G M P. Uh, you can see the total bids received at seven point six million. Uh, the hundred percent G M P of the space one is ninety point six million. And these are all the details, um, including the various uh, overhead costs as part of phase one. Next slide. Also, as part of this, as you recall, we set aside um, some of our ARPA funds, about three million dollars um, plus of our ARPA funds. Um, right now, we're recommending using um, upwards of four point seven million dollars in ARPA funds and working with burning stores that in the finance part. We had two projects that we had set aside our funds for. One was a street project um, with street rehab project. The other one was a stormwater um, pump station rehab project. We think we're better off using um, ARPA funds um, in this project to add those.
Recharge battery.
Um, um, to to add those funds into in the three million into that or add up to that four point seven. The reason why we're saying that really the other funds are meant for large projects, mainly in the water, wastewater. So those other two projects were gonna be challenging uh, to work into all the ARPA conditions. So we're, this is a project that we have under bid. Uh, we've gotta have these funds allocated by next year. So we think this is a better project for us to um, for um, provide those two. We also bid um, this as a clean water S R F loan. So anything um, as part of that nine point a million dollars, the remaining part will be part of our clean water S R F program. You've already approved the uh, the loan funding in September. And so this is us asking you. That's what we're asking for this year. Next slide. Again, if we uh, we move forward today, right now, with the construction start would be in July and this this final completion would be next July uh, twenty twenty-four. Again, I wanna mention phase two, which is a larger portion that'll become later, later this year. So we'll have some more deliberations on that. Next slide. Again, here's the, here's the recommended city council action. It's also your staff report that I've already gone over. Um, next slide. And then one of the things we wanna do is look at, when we were back in twenty twenty-one, we were, we were projecting um, wastewater rates, what they would look like. Uh, the wastewater fund has has, I mean, had a lot of investments over the year term. So if you look at Grand Valley, um, all being the new pump station uh, on the south side, for Spain. Those are all city costs that to that self and development or also on, we've talked about Highway eighty-one. Um. We built a domestic pump station, up there wastewater pump station, similar to Grand Valley. And then we're also looking at some of those wastewater investments too. So the wastewater enterprise fund is has um, provided a lot of significant investments over the last couple of years to move forward with uh, growth in our community. So this is what we showed you um, back in the day when we looked at wastewater treatment, you know, fifty-two million dollar facility with um, forty million dollars coming up debt service. So that existing wastewater treatment plant, pretty much all the waste pretty much all the debt services off that is twenty-plus years. And so that's the good part. The other part is that we're renewing it and expanding it for the next twenty years. And so we're gonna um, we're gonna familiar some further debt. So if we wanted to keep these um, rates, if we looked over the horizon between that two and three percent, two percent on on um, residential, three percent on commercial, and this is what we showed you. So the next slide is really to show you what the impacts of all those investments so we got. So next slide. Right now, um, we're looking at a set of twos and threes. It looks like more like threes and fours if you look over the time horizon. Um, right now, we're looking at twenty twenty-four. So that's a four and a half, five and a half, will likely look to try to smooth that out over that between twenty twenty-four and twenty thirty. So I think the moral story is.
There's a number of other things that are affecting first of all with you know, fighting reasons, um, a lot of it's bowling, the water drain affecting fuel prices perhaps between all those things that are on our control and fire the so next slide. Um, that top one right there, there's been a major influx of funding into the municipal uh, infrastructure. Yeah, quite frankly, uh, the period that we did, uh, work with the primary revenue there from the address. And we're being really more work rate out in our time back to do this type of work and time mentioned. Water wastewater work is really the niche market. And we'll come to the summer areas, we'll struggle to find ourselves in most suppliers than we before. So uh, we're able to self-decorate very long. We always like, I think. We did have, we we um, man, all this actually. There are getting more work than other places. So we're challenged every day with players who work with some of the ones that are like product that we do, that we work with, that we go to. Um, that I have a version, water impacts, um, major problems. We recently had a one of my shops, you know, we made forty dollars. For payment and then get off. Go to thirty, forty. Yes. So I have to be dealing mostly operators on the local operators. And then actually materials, um, certain third material uses factory, factory, workforce, the third wheel. Waterway on the land. Same spot only, other than most of the ones go, I think we're gonna do some real and those things. So I think that we need to find a good example with uh, a part of the time that we did in early two thousand and twenty. Three points, there were like thirty-three hundred tons, three more. We made luckily eight hundred ninety-nine dollars. That same money today is what goes to some of this concrete. So historically, it is the two more understanding fees that we did well with all this right around over to November. And everybody's know, I think so many times, or maybe more than that year. Where's the, I was in Ohio, I was in eight, twelve, ten, two, three years ago. So I mean, it's not a good, it could be a twenty dollar. Yeah, here's a good example. I found this with a part of my business from really good. We got to do a spot in, earn today prices on that, and we know that we want to do that. That was a hard case, made with a website. There were two betters. Two betters that might have ended for three. We wanted, we ended up making a plan, we ended up investing twenty four million. Our bid day rises through more work. We were able to D E somebody else out, and there's some ideas that we had, if the owner didn't have that. Mitchell was another good example. These are all jobs that were done, that have been dealt for the last two years. Eighteen months early, Mitchell felt the quota. Engineers estimate it was thirteen, did a price of fifteen, but in with a lot of half, had a hard bid job. We hit the B B on that, and a lot of dollars, now. I could see another part of it. Our bid day rise, which was sweet point finally important to the sentiment. What one was, was so bad, we were over. And we said how you spend all these cases and what you're doing in detail. Where the engineer is going, show that where the process is, you know, and early. You know, engineers don't go to fight the media on a day to day basis, so we don't want to go in current real time. Next slide. Heard construction product environment, but let's talk a little bit about C Mar and. As I mentioned earlier, things that that we do, that we reduce them and we can count on. As far as the main time, we don't see that anymore, but what are the advantages of the C Mar project? We can identify those laundry items and get investment, make a root beyond some of the different ways to do it. If yours are qualified contractors, we're going to, as I mentioned earlier. Not many hitters out there, more work, there's actually, there's another thing I wanted to mention. I had recently. Real time on at the school, in real time on. When we all went down to bid, the owner of the property used to buy it like first, and they were the one, only four really in the factory that was really fine.
I think really our concentration, we are probably going to say one. Well, we're doing a lot of work on page two and throughout the year, meaning. And this is the fourth project for us, complete capacity, we weren't able to. So you mentioned. You mentioned you know that better, because of that, there's a lot of money going into management. Which double that sort of like. Self going across, when you, it's no, and then you actually personally are driving cost of yourself. Your volume too much. Do you have any sense of when that will play its course through?
Do you have money?
Yeah, when is money is starting to dry up?
We've been wondering, we had that same question for a while.
I think it's my first one, my total, I think, just saying we have. Number of projects that we're planning and living. And then we also have the projects that we're doing because. There's no hint to the amount of projects that we have lovely ourselves. Right, I'm assuming it's the same. So you did mention in your first slide that it's a tiny one. Yeah, there's an unpredictability of what's going on. I'm going to ask you to predict what is the greatest possible. And what is not making it just completely make these large wins or what? You don't ever see it going in the end.
We don't, that's not the very word. So you only did over the R T month. Yeah, and then, you know. Yeah, fifty yards, I mean, that's really hard to spend. Because it's test product. So I, I do know, I know the guys are very well. I know Jim, but I talk very well on that. And I have to ask those similar questions. No, they don't, we don't need to do that. Right, but my point is, there's, there's only, there's always only hungry guys. And I don't think you're going to get anybody to go comment that that request, so.
We're messing.
Yeah.
You did, there's some that we do solve. And so, and this is the G M P that we've got, and you've already.
So phase one, yes, has been bid out, and we basically were, we're at, what I would call a B G O P. We did a phase one, because other than that, basically, we didn't laugh at what I was doing, being one right now. That was the only one that's going to take my way.
Mine, we were going, going, going in this phase two, moving a lot of it. It's changing long.
Yes, you heard those people that they went.
Another account, you know. They were visiting, because we. Gathering and putting anybody into our, into our reach, John, where he's bringing him over this part. They have, they reallocated most on. Sometimes there's a reason to ask the question. Any other questions? I am former conflict member, this definitely matters.
I just want to remind everyone that we don't write with that.